This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, today is Wednesday, January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one. I'd like to call this evening's regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To stand for the nation under God. In the vision of justice for all.
Let have your call.
Councilmember Boff?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Councilmember Servin?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. There are no requests for any items to be removed, but I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Cliff, do you have any citizens' public comment this evening?
No, we do not have any public comment.
Okay, thank you. For next of the mayor's report, I do have a few items I'd like to share with the council this evening. First, I'll take a moment to introduce our Lieutenant and Chief, Administrative Chief of Police. Chief Richardson has a long and distinguished law enforcement career spanning over forty years. His most recent employment was the Chief of Police for the City of Battleground, nine years before retiring in February twenty twenty. Before serving as the Chief of Police for the City of Battleground, Chief Richardson worked for the City of Irvine, California, for thirty years before retiring as a police commander. He is also a veteran of the United States Army. Chief Richardson has a master's degree in public administration from the University of Southern California, and a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Known throughout Clark County and the state for his law enforcement expertise and training, Chief Richardson is equally as passionate about his commitment to his community partners. Chief Richardson has served on several boards and committees in Clark County, including the Clark County Health Advisory Commission, Clark Regional Emergency Services Agency, and the Clark County Juvenile Justice Council, to name just a few. I want to thank Chief Richardson for his continued commitment to public service and law enforcement. Welcome, welcome aboard, Chief.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
May I just have to give the council a reminder that if you see the AWC Action Days, Virtual Action Days this year, it will be February tenth and eleventh. If any of the council members would like to register for that meeting, please contact Maria and let you register. I understand that council members have already registered, councilmember Boff and councilmember Hill. Also, I just want, now my next mayor's town hall will be at five thirty, Wednesday, February third. Everybody is welcome to attend. The go-to moving information is on the city website. And I look forward to visiting with everybody at my town hall. And then Cliff, if you could please put up the plaque for Chief Denny. As the council knows, Chief Denny accepted a position as the Chief of Police for the City of Burlington, Iowa on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Because of the state mandated restrictions to public gatherings, there will not be an opportunity for the city to host a farewell ceremony for Chief Denny. At our last city council meeting, the city also had an opportunity to share their appreciation with Chief Denny for his contributions to our community and thank him for seven and a half years of service. I wish Chief Denny all the best and good luck as he begins his new position. Denny will be receiving this plaque from the citizens of the center. I will read it. It's presented to City of the Center Police Chief Mark Denny in recognition and appreciation of service and dedication to the citizens of the center. Years of service to the City of the Center, two thousand thirteen through two thousand and twenty one. That's all I have this evening, council. Next on the agenda will be the attorney's report. Do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, members of the public. I have a couple items that I'd like to report to you on this evening. The first is on the response to the pandemic and the changes to the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act. As you're aware, in March of twenty twenty, the governor issued a proclamation which essentially banned in-person city council meetings. And then he also made some modifications to the Public Records Act, which banned in-person examination of records in city facilities and modified the required response time to public records requests. And since March, the governor has issued a series of thirty days, thirty-day extensions to his proclamations. And those proclamations have to be approved by the leaders of the State House and Senate. And that's how we've operated up until this month. And now with the legislature in session, the legislature through a Senate concurrent resolution eighty-four oh two, extended the governor's proclamations until either the earlier of the termination of the state of emergency or until the proclamations are rescinded by the governor or the legislature. So we won't have to be watching for or relying on thirty-day incremental extensions now that the legislature has acted. There's been one other development, and that is effective, I believe, January eleven this year. Incremental or a public meetings can occur in person, at least a component of public meetings can occur in person with the limitation that any place where the public meeting occurs can only be filled to twenty-five percent of capacity. All people present in the meeting have to be spaced at least six feet apart, and all Department of Labor and Industry requirements have to be followed. And then you also have to still continue to provide the ability for people to access the meetings remotely. Lastly, on the pandemic front, I looked at the Department of, the State Department of Health dashboard today. And as you will recall from our last meeting, the state's divided up into eight regions. We're all in phase one to start, and then move to phase two. You have to meet four different criteria. We're in southwest Washington. Southwest Washington was of the last reporting, which was last Friday, had only met one out of the four criteria, and that was the intensive care unit capacity criterion. So, and no region had met all four. So I'll shift unless there's a question on what I've said about the pandemic response. Okay, last week, the Court of Appeals issued an opinion, which I think would be of interest to you, and that is a case called West versus Clark County. And in that case, an individual named Arthur West, who makes a career out of suing governments for Public Records Act violations, Mr. West sued Clark County. And the controversy had to do with then councilmember Mador's personal Facebook page. And on his Facebook page, he posted several statements having to do with a number of issues, but included the county's comprehensive plan, housing shortage, increasing property taxes, the county budget, light rail, and he invited the public to come.
Oh, geez, Christ.
On these issues. The trial court, so there was a public records request by Mr. West for these posts to the Facebook page and the comments made on the Facebook page. The county responded by providing an affidavit saying that these are not public records, that they're personal records. The trial court ruled in favor of Mr. West, went up on appeal, and the Court of Appeal reversed the trial court and said that the Facebook posts were not public records, and it used the test that is used for when a government employee or official uses a personal device, potentially to conduct government business. And in that situation, part of the test is that these statements or posts have to be made within the scope of the person's employment. And the critical test there was whether or not the post furthered the county's interests. And what the Court of Appeals ruled, and this is an unpublished opinion, which means that a trial court doesn't have to follow this opinion, but it can refer to it for whatever value it wants to put on the opinion. And the Court of Appeals ruled that these posts were not furthering the county's interests, that they were simply councilmember Mador's personal expressions of his opinions or his interests in these issues, and they were not a public record. That he wasn't acting in an official capacity, and he was not conducting the county's business. So it was interesting to me because there haven't been that many cases involving personal devices and Facebook posts in particular. But in this case, it was a Facebook post. It did talk about issues that were related to the county's business, but it differentiated between personal statements from statements made in an official capacity on behalf of the county and concluded that these were not public records. So I found that interesting anyway. So that concludes my report, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. Not hearing any questions, we'll continue to move on. Next will be council member comments. I remember Boff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have one item, and I would like to welcome Chief Richardson to the center. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to hold this up to the thing, screen. I don't know if you can see it. I got this in the mail today in a large envelope. Looks like it was a general mailing, but this is a program to mail in unused medications. And it came with a postpaid envelope. Again, I got this in the mail today. Looks like a good program. It's a pretty secure envelope. With the COVID stuff going on and the fact that we can't get together, I would believe that probably drug pickup days are not going to be happening this year. So this looks like a good alternative. I know I have a couple bottles that have a pill here and a pill there that I'd like to get rid of. So anyway, if you see this in your mail, look at it and evaluate it and see if you want to use it. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Strobin?
Just welcome Chief Richardson to the town, and I think that's about it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Servin?
I too would like to welcome Chief Richardson to the center. Look forward to working with you and happy to have your experience and help guiding us forward.
Thank you. And councilmember Hill?
Yes, and I just want to send out greetings to the center of citizens that are on tonight and the fact that I appreciate all of those that are on, joining us and participating since we can't meet in person. And also want to extend my welcome to Chief Richardson and wish him the best and know that we're here for him. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports. We have three staff reports this evening. The first one will be the Public Works Staff Report, and the Public Works Director, Mr. Matt Jenkins, will be presenting.
Yeah, good evening, council, mayor, citizens. I've got the Public Works Staff Report for January twenty twenty one. I'll start with Public Works Operations, Streets and Facilities. It's treating the main roads for ice. When the forecast show below thirty-two degrees in weather, we're all on call and all common equipment and branding equipment is available. So we're good. Leaf and foliage management and clearing catch basins is still a continuous activity that'll be ongoing until spring. Public Works is working on making storage improvements to the material bins on city properties, one off of, I believe, Fifth and the one behind the city shop. That should increase our capacity and allow us to take larger loads and get bulk discounts on those larger loads. Public Works has been working on keeping city properties maintained and drainage systems clear throughout the city. As always, the crew is continuously monitoring and repairing streets. The community center play structures and restrooms throughout town remain closed due to COVID nineteen. No surprise there. And then we do have new janitorial company taking over janitorial, and that's ABM. They've taken over janitorial for city hall, community development, and pardon my typo, that's not Public Works, that's actually the police department. And with that, they also offer a deeper cleaning, so if there is a COVID outbreak, they can come in and sanitize them at a deeper level. So that's, we're happy to have them on board. That's a service we're looking forward to. On parks and grounds, all irrigation systems have been winterized. foliage management on the parks and trails continues. Public Works is repairing parking lots in both Pollock Park and on the bridge. The massive rains that we got and the high river levels caused minimal damage. We didn't lose any picnic tables or any of the any of the structures, but it did leave the parking lots and some of the gravel in need of repair and grading. Battleground and Clark County Work Crews still remain unavailable. Staff has removed several dying and dead trees along Fourth and Heritage Park. Mitigation will happen once we enter spring. I've gotten some citizen comments about the amount of trees we're removing, but we will replant. There's just a time, there's a season for everything, right? And there's a time to plant and make sure that when we do plant those trees, it's not wasted and that they do take. So, you know, if you see us taking out trees, we will be replacing them. On the personnel side, currently all staff are working normal shifts. All appropriate safety precautions are being followed. On the project side, have no current projects, which leads us to wastewater operations. On the operations side, all plant parameters remain well within compliance for the MPDS permit. Staff is optimizing plant processes as weather continues to change. Colder weather calls for different plant parameters to make sure our effluent quality remains top-notch. Bio-sol shipments continue on normal weekly deliveries, and staff is still performing stormwater testing on Fifth and Tenth Street. They're testing for biological loading or bacterial loading in the storm stream. Our lab is fully certified at the wastewater plant, so they're pitching in and helping with some of that testing and monitoring. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is ongoing. Staff has identified a failing bearing in the dryer drive motor. Now, was it the time I wrote this, but now that motor's actually been replaced. So we are back to a hundred percent operational status on that. The Riverside Boxide System piping has been replaced. It was originally installed with some cracks and some some ill-formed piping. The manufacturer came back, or the vendor came back and made it right. So we are good to go with that. Staff replaced two NBR flow tubes. Those are the tubes that that communicate with us how much flow the NBRs are actually producing or how much permeate they're actually filtering out. Those have been replaced, and we are working with the vendor on rebuilding the original two flow tubes and what actually went wrong. Staff also replaced one lamp on UV number two. Doesn't sound significant, but the lamps are about four hundred bucks, so I figured it was worth mentioning. And on the administrative side, the December DMR Discharge Monitor Import is complete and submitted to the Department of Ecology. The own and manual review has been completed, and a letter was sent also to Ecology. The twenty twenty annual effluent DMR has also been completed and submitted to the Department of Ecology, so that wraps up all of our reporting for twenty twenty. Staff is currently working regular shifts but maintaining social distancing practices, and the plant database and logbooks have been updated for twenty twenty one. And there are currently no projects being conducted. On the building department side, permitting and construction are still progressing at a strong rate. Staff has conducted an average of twelve to fifteen stops per day, resulting in about twenty to forty inspections per day. We did see a slight dip there for a week or two, but seems to be back to strength at this point. Single-family residential plan review times are currently two weeks. That includes the three- to five-day window for quarantine and along with review. So staff has taken in one hundred and forty-three plans and applications for single-family residences year-to-date, so that would be for all of twenty twenty. I believe we landed at one forty-three. That'll reset in my next report next month. Inspections will continue to be performed as long as the builders meet in the social distancing protocols set by the state and the building officials comfortable with those protocols. Staff are working modified shifts in community development due to COVID nineteen, and the office space remains closed to the public without an appointment. And then on the stormwater side, staff is working with Clark County Public Health on performing MST testing on two identified locations. The city continues to work on source identification for bacteria and pollutants. We're working with both the Department of Ecology, Clark County Clean Water, and a number of other stakeholders. But just to give you a little information on MST testing, I get a little out of hand with the acronym sometimes, and I apologize. What that is, it's DNA testing, and so that will trace, it's a type of source testing that'll tell us if the bacteria's coming from basically the intestines of dogs, human, livestock, goats, you know, anything that could be along that stream and polluting it. So we think from there, we'll be able to really hone in and identify what the sources are polluting those streams and make a huge impact on that bacterial loading. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thanks, Matt. Good report.
Hey, Matt, on that bacterial testing, you're working with Clark County Health. If this is outside the city limits, will the county try to trace those sources?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Clark County's currently working on tracing a number of sources outside of city limits, whether it be septic systems that are past due, anything from one acre hobby farms up to twenty or forty acre dairies. They're looking at all that. But within city limits, we'll have an interlocal agreement, and we'll be responsible for that portion of the conveyance and reduce what we can. But the two sources we identified are definitely within our city limits, and so I think we've got a really good chance of making a huge impact on those.
Were those human or animal?
We won't know until we get the MST testing results back.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Jenkins? Okay, thank you. Good report, Matt. Well, the next staff report we have this evening is the Clark Calletts Fire and Rescue Staff Report, and I'd like to welcome Chief Peeler to this evening's meeting, and we're anxious to get your report, Chief. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Perfect. Trying a new microphone tonight, so thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for allowing me time tonight. And I also want to thank Chief Richardson. Him and I had the opportunity to work several years together on the CRESSA Administrative Board together, so it's great to work with you again. Good hearing your voice, Bob. It's been a very busy time at the fire district lately. We just have a lot of things going on right now, and multiple projects are happening, and a relatively common comment I'm hearing throughout headquarters right now is folks are regularly commenting about not being able to remember a busier time. And it seems strange because in the world of COVID, we seem like a lot of things have just slowed down, but quite the opposite's happened in our world. Our call volume kind of stabilized a little bit this year. We didn't see the typical five percent increase, five to ten percent increase. We see why that was COVID-related, as well as some changes to response plans we did. But otherwise, it's just been very busy times. So a couple of those projects, just want to quickly highlight is first foremost, our fire district changed our name. We're now Clark Calletts Fire Rescue. Want to point out that this isn't the first time that Le Center has experienced a name change of the fire district serving you. In ninety-five, you went to Fire District fourteen and started contracting Fire District twelve. And then in two thousand and eight, Fire District twelve and eleven combined to form Clark County Fire Rescue. And then last year, the City of Woodland, we officially annexed the City of Woodland into our service area. So City of Woodland was being, we were providing service since two thousand and thirteen to the City of Woodland via contract, and we went ahead and did an official annexation, voter-approved annexation. So they're now part of the fire district, so it seemed very appropriate and timely to do a subtle name change that actually more accurately reflected our response area. So we are officially Clark Calletts Fire Rescue. And you know, when I do the numbers of those years that we do name changes, it appears about every thirteen years, we're changing your fire department's name. So those around thirteen years from now, we'll see if it happens again. Just yesterday, we received a brand-new fire engine. It's always exciting every time we get new equipment or when we get new equipment. And within a few months, we'll be getting a second new fire engine that was obtained through a grant through our, the Calletts Tribal Partners obtained a grant that allowed a purchase of another fire engine. That fire engine will be located at the Le Center Fire Station. So probably before summer, you'll see a brand-new fire engine driving through Le Center and paid for with grant dollars from the tribe. We're currently in a hiring mode right now. We're looking at hiring five firefighters right now. We hope the first three, who will be laterals, will start on March first, and then we'll do two more in April for the May State Fire Academy start time. So it's a great opportunity, time we can get laterals to come to us, and it really streamlines ladder training and costs with them, and they can get on the line much quicker, a lot quicker process, so we're fortunate there. Recently, our crews responded to a call in Le Center that I kind of want to highlight this call that we responded on. An older gentleman fell off a ladder as they were trying to work on the exterior of his house to replace a vent cover on the exterior of the house. And after the ambulance transported him, the crews decided to stick around, stay behind, and finish that project for him. And that way, when he got released from the hospital, the project was done. He didn't have to worry about going back up that ladder and finishing that project. And I really want to highlight that because that's just one example of many opportunities our crews take and go above and beyond. They're very community-driven, and they don't ask permission to do these things. They just do these things and get them done, serve the community and serve folks. So with that one, transitioning into just a couple of response data stuff, it's January, so it's statistics time. The data that's included in the packet is our preliminary raw data. It hasn't necessarily been fully filtered yet because It hasn't necessarily been fully filtered yet because I was, it was assembled uh back on January fifth. So we're still going through and uh scrubbing the data. So this is all the preliminary response data that we had. A couple of highlights is uh just over forty-two hundred nine-one-one responses the district had. Um your local fire station is Station Twenty-three. That's the fire station in, in uh Le Center right there. And they had within its station area, which includes the city limits and the unincorporated Clark County area, along with the Callitz Tribe, uh Callitz Reservation, there's about seven hundred forty-nine response cau- uh responses inside its station area. Of those, two hundred forty-seven of those calls were within the city of Le Center. Um that said, the fire engine from Le Center responded to just over a thousand calls total. So seven hundred forty-nine calls were within its response area and then about three hundred calls were outside of its response area, like fires and um uh outside its sec- as second due, third due uh response or the backup engine to other uh critical calls requiring additional response. So um so that pretty much summarizes the, the report I had prepared tonight. Are there uh any questions for me or anything? Great.
Just thank you for the report and uh thank you guys for your service.
Good report and the microphone sounds great.
Thank you.
Keith, this is uh Dennis Hill. Uh just a quick question regarding the uh uh replacement engines. Uh do the uh ones that are being replaced, do they stay within our system or are they sold and, and outside uh to other uh corporations or other companies or cities?
Yeah, we maintain a certain number of reserve apparatus. So the frontline apparatus that are uh first out right now and uh, so we staff five stations with uh five career crews right now. So we have five frontline fire engines. Uh as we replace them, the current frontline one becomes a reserve apparatus and typically a much older reserve apparatus then gets surplus. Um a lot of times uh we'd send them to local volunteer fire departments for doing, kind of like how C-Trans does a lot of their property transit, transfers for a dollar to local governments. We do something similar a lot of times to fire engines uh to get them to continue serving, especially if we can give it to a neighboring volunteer fire district or somewhere real close that, that way we can still serve our community and, and serve them well in much slower system than ours.
Thank you much.
Okay, Chief, thank you very much for your report and also thank you for sharing that story uh with where your firefighters assisted the, the center resident that was unfortunately injured in a, in an accident. So uh really appreciate that. Um, great story. Uh we have one other staff report this evening. It'll be the Community Development Staff Report and Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So uh I have a couple of things to cover with you this evening. The first is the monthly project reports. I'll go through a few updates there and then I'm gonna channel my best Ethan Spoo and talk about uh Planning Commission a little bit. So uh I have revised, kind of cleaned up the project list and the map. I'm using a map now that has the entire city of Le Center on one page. And so maybe if we could roll to that and I will highlight um the specific projects and the updates. So the first project I'll talk about is number three on the list and on the map. And it's the Le Center Middle School. And the update on this one is that uh there was an emergency critical areas exemption that was issued back in October of twenty twenty for a swale in the wetland buffer. And uh this exemption was extended through June of, of this year, twenty twenty-one. On uh, so the next update is number ten and that is the Holly Park Subdivision. And the update there is that twenty-eight single-family residential uh permits, plans have been approved and permits issued. Um the next one is number eleven, Case Place. The final plat for phases two and three were submitted and were under review by the city as of uh January eleventh. Uh Riverside Estates, that's number twelve. Talk about that one next. In uh phase one, there are eighty-five building plans that have been uh approved. Eighty-five units have been approved. The other note on that one has to do with the um parks issue and we've talked a little bit about that this project is in receivership. Uh it was placed, a receiver was appointed by the court uh back in uh November, I believe. And the project was essentially placed on hold um in December by the city. We stopped reviewing the plans for the park and so on. We've been working with the receiver uh to resolve various issues and get them to uh appoint a project representative so that we could continue with the review. And I'm happy to say that uh things have uh been resolved and we are uh back in a position where we can uh recommence reviewing the parks plans for phase four and uh getting phase three constructed. So uh some good news on that project. Um the next one I will talk about is uh number eighteen. And this is the um new city hall project at the former TDS Telecom Building. The uh architect submitted plans for review on uh January nineteenth. And uh those uh have been, the uh submission has been accepted as complete and the city is beginning its formal review. Um on other projects, the Shoreline Master Program, um there will likely be a council hearing on this in March or April to uh wrap up that project. Um on the uh ADU Code, the city council, you all approved the new ADU Code on January thirteenth. Um the downtown overlay code was approved on December sixteenth. And uh one final note here, uh Clark Public Utilities has been uh working with the city to obtain a shorelines and critical areas programmatic exemption. And uh the planner who is working on that on behalf of the city has produced a draft staff report that uh has been under review by staff. Um so a couple of these that are completed, you'll see those uh drop off the list in next month's report. And finally, if we go down to the next page, this is where I'm gonna do my best to channel Ethan Spoo and uh Planning Commission. Uh there are three projects which the Planning Commission uh will undertake this year for sure. And uh the first of those is the Shoreline Master Program Update. They're shooting for a target adoption date of uh May twelfth. Uh there are annual comprehensive plan amendments um dealing with issues like uh density and some outdated items that are in the comp plan. And uh Ethan is looking towards uh the fall of twenty twenty-one to adopt those items. And then uh Title eighteen, which is the development code, there are a number of updates needed. There's some conflicting language about uh density requirements and uh some issues that need to be cleaned up around development agreements. Uh and so this will be kind of a uh ongoing project throughout the year where the uh Planning Commission and staff will uh produce some uh amended code and it will eventually work its way to council for adoption. The next section of this sheet uh talks about projects that are waiting on funding. The first of those is the Timmin Landing Historic Town Center Subarea Plan. Uh this was uh something the council appropriated for last year. COVID hit, so we uh did not expend that funding uh so that we could have some turnback to help uh balance the city's finances, given the impacts of COVID nineteen. And uh for this one, we are uh just kind of, you know, wait and see mode on uh what happens with COVID and the funding picture, uh as well as looking at other potential sources of funding through the state. Um with that, uh it's intended to update some site design standards. And uh so this would be something um combined with this sub-area plan and planned action area. The, on the next page, junction development, the Planning Commission's involvement in that. Um we had some initial discussions uh back before COVID hit. Um we've been uh as staff talking with uh developers and their representatives and property owners about different strategies to uh get their land uh more development-ready. And uh so those discussions are ongoing as we uh address concerns that they have and, and look at potential ways to uh improve the developability of that area. Uh multi-use trails, uh Clark County is working on developing a multi-use trail system um throughout the entire county. And so uh the Planning Commission has had an interest in researching uh potential economic opportunities um like uh tourism promotion um that result from trail development and uh to make recommendations on how the city should approach that project. And then uh food carts. The commission has expressed interest on, regarding this issue on several different occasions. And uh the commission needs to decide whether they want to move this topic forward. And if so, uh what level of regulations would be necessary to encourage food cart development? And where and when they are to be allowed in the city. Um down on the bottom of that page, they've listed some uh projects that have been completed or nearly completed. Um the Discovery Corridor Adaptive Infrastructure Project, which was led by the city of Ridgefield and funded by a uh Wash Dot Planning Grant, that has been completed. Um Chuck Green from uh OTAC presented at the uh September Planning Commission Meeting on that project. Uh the Cottage Housing Code was completed and adopted in uh, in the fall. And the criti- Critical Areas Code uh update that has been uh completed and the final ordinance has been sent to the Department of Commerce. The uh Downtown Overlay Code, council took action on this in December. And the uh accessory dwelling unit code was adopted earlier this month. So I think what we're looking for on this list of uh Planning Commission projects or work program is input from council on, you know, is, does this align with your vision of what the Planning Commission should be working on in terms of their role supporting the city council on planning and land use issues? Any thoughts on that?
Jeff, I got a quick question here. On the sub-area plan, uh refresh my memory, I, I, I could be thinking of a different thing. But uh I believe the, us council members all decided that's something we really want to see pushed forward because that'll help spur economic growth. And I'm kind of confused as to it being held on uh funding situation.
Yeah, so it was not approved in the twenty twenty-one budget. It was approved in the twenty twenty budget that we, you know, like, like with lots of capital expenditures and other cost savings measures when COVID hit, we deferred a lot of those to see what the financial picture would look like. And um it did not reappear in the twenty twenty-one budget. And our thinking is, is we'll watch, you know, the car rooms reopening and how COVID gets resolved. And when it seems appropriate to do so, we'll bring that back before the council as part of a budget amendment. And we'll commence on that work.
Hey, Council, you know, we, we can also take the initiative to uh reactivate that as well. We don't have to wait for someone to, to present that.
Uh that's true.
That's a good idea.
If you want to direct us to bring forward a budget amendment, we could certainly do that.
I, you know, personally, I thought it was pretty important, uh, you know, I was really skeptical when it was first brought to the budget in twenty nineteen for twenty twenty. And uh, you know, reading over and listening to you guys talk about it and more, I, I became more in favor of it. And I, I think I expressed that even in this last budget, uh just because of what's going on with COVID and funding and thought it would be something that can help spur for the future. So I, I am in favor of the, the sub-area plan.
Maybe we should bring this up as a topic in our retreats.
Yeah.
It's something we definitely can do, so I appreciate your comments. Do you have to recount what the appropriation was for that particular project?
It was uh five hundred thousand over two years.
Okay, so um yes, we can uh definitely bring that up in the retreat and if Council so desires, we can get uh brought forward as a budget amendment and move forward with it. Any other uh questions for Mr. Swanson? Okay.
Thanks, Jeff. That was a good report.
I do have, I do have a question. Um the uh Discovery Corridor project, um where can that be found? When can a, an electronic copy be found so I can familiarize myself with that?
Uh you know what I can do is I can track that down and uh send it out to the council.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good, thanks again, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Um so next on the agenda, under new business, we do have one item. Um we have uh two of our planning commissioners, uh Mr. Dennis Nutbrock and Mr. Jeremy Smith. Their terms have expired. Um but I had a chance to visit with both of them earlier this week and they both agreed to um uh to continue on with the Planning Commission for another term. And as you can tell by just the previous report we had, the great deal amount of work that has taken place and continues to take place uh on the Planning Commission. And both these individuals have served the city well. So um I would like to see them continue as planning commissioners. And I'm just asking the council for their confirmation that both of, of both Mr. Dennis Nutbrock and Mr. Jeremy Smith uh can extend for another term as planning commissioners.
Here, I'll make a motion that we approve Dennis Nutbrock and Jeremy Smith's appointment for another term.
I second it.
Okay, it's been, it's been seconded to approve Mr. Nutbrock and Mr. Smith uh for an additional term on the Center Planning Commission. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Council. Um so that concludes our meeting for this evening. Uh I would like to thank everyone for joining us. And just hope everybody continues to sit well and be safe. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
And move the second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Good night, everyone.